Thank you, Worship. Well, the green dots that you have on there, like sell properties, we're already doing that. We're already trying to do that. So, I don't know if, I don't know what else you could do. We have a salesperson out there selling, "Oh, I get you. It's properties that we..." Like buildings, you mean? Now, is that what you were talking about? Buildings we own? Other properties that we own? Okay. Now, go right down to Acoustics Blueprint? I'm probably not saying it right. Well, there was already motion on the floor and passed through council, right? So, to have that brought back to council and look at it. But far as money, a mighty money item, we really don't know because we haven't picked anything out of there yet. But are you saying there should be a $50,000 or a $100,000 limit on that if you price it? Or do we wait till we look at the book and say, "These things, these are easy to implement from the first year to the second year to the 20th year or whatever?"
Everything in the book is already prioritized.
Okay.
So, what we don't know, like this one, that's easy. We advise the Waterfront Corporation to...
That's right. That's what I'm trying to say. That's coming back.
Blueprint back to the table.
Yep.
There's no cost to that.
No.
There is cost into that.
That's right.
And so, the difficulty with that is, well, the challenge with that is going to be, let's say you want to do a half million dollar stuff in Blueprint this year.
Yep.
We've already talked about capital budget. We'll have to revisit that.
Yep.
Because there's nothing in there.
Okay.
In the blueprint, other than the authors.
Okay. And we are doing that. So, that's part of, that's out of that book. That's out of that book, anyway.
Right. If you want to accelerate our other things in that book, those are part of the issue.
Okay, right. Okay. So, I just didn't want to lose that part of the Acoustics plan to be brought back to council. We, to me, to me, I wouldn't know if I would prioritize that one by a 1, 5 to 10. That one, I know it's going to come back and I know we're going to, I know we are going to work on it and we're going to implement some of it. But the other ones, the other priorities, they're not so much priority. I don't know if they're really priorities or just a list of, a wish list of things that we'd like to do. These are not carved in stone that we want to do. We already have another list there. These are just ideas that we're writing down and you're going to put a price tag on them and send them to us. And we have to prioritize different ones we'd like to see, what we think is important to us.
And if everybody thinks, kind of, three of 30 pages, the most priority of the whole list, chances are we've been touched.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Because mine is, well, anyway, I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Dennis?
The Hawthorne Street project, is that funded by the government? Like, is that funding that the waterfront development already has? Or is that something that comes out of our budget?
The Waterfront Development Corporation has...
Yeah, go ahead.
Has $150,000 allocated for that. It's about a $700,000 project. So, of the 150, the town's contribution to that is about $38,000, about 25 percent. It's about 25 percent of that is town money that we've already contributed. The balance of that was in David's capital budget and is in the recommendation to council to approve for capital. So, most of that, the lion's share of that, is coming from county area taxpayers.
Good. Okay. So, are you good with the process? Are you all right?
Yeah, I think I'm pretty clear on what I want to be asked to do. And we'll try and, try and do this well in no time flat, when it's probably already got typed up.
Not surprised. And she's just good. Okay. All right. That's part of, that part of the meeting's done?
Oh, that was good.
It was, it was good. It was good. Because it's, it's one thing to prioritize, for me. It's one thing to put a number on it. But, you know, when somebody speaks up and says, "This is why I'm doing it," it changes your, you know, it's that information. So, that, it helps me. It helps me a lot. Okay. Next. Are we okay? We're not supposed to go past four? There's a rule?
No.
Okay. Sidewalk cafes, CAO.
Your Worship, last year, we implemented for the first time the licensing of space, parking spaces, in front of businesses for the use of, for the use by the, by the property owner for sidewalk cafes. We implemented that. We had two, two businesses take us up on that offer. And we charged a nominal $1 for that license. So, there are, I guess, two questions before us. And one is, do we want to repeat that this year? I've had inquiries already. And I think there may be, in fact, at least one additional business considering it. Do we want to repeat that and have it, have parking spaces available to businesses to license for the use as a cafe? And the second question, which was discussed briefly earlier, is what is, what is the price that we would be seeking? Last year, we did it for a dollar, a nominal dollar, just to see what the impact would be and how it would be received in the community.
Councilor Mooney?
I'm all right with the price of a dollar, your worship. The businesses that are doing the sidewalk cafes are already taxpayers. I know in one of the cases, significant. The other one's a nonprofit. But I know the building that they're in, they pay a significant amount of taxes. So, to put, so what's the number that we want to put on? Do you want to put a $500 thing, like the same you do for a food truck? Or, I think they're a great addition to our downtown. I think the more we have, we don't want to lose every parking space we have. But I think a dollar is a nominal fee. I don't know what, what does it cost to, I don't think there's any other cost, CAO, besides signing an agreement? Really?
Jim, he's going to answer that. Okay? Is that okay? Go ahead, CAO. You're on.
Yeah, there's no, there's no incremental cost. Our engineer does the agreements with the, or traffic authority does the agreements with the property owner. So, he spends a little bit of time on it. But there are no incremental costs.
Yeah. I'm happy with, I'm happy with the way it is and for a dollar. I know with food trucks, that's a different, whole different, whole different ballgame. So, I see no problem with the present agreement.
Councilor Langel?
I agree. I think the more the merrier. I know under the Acoustics Plan, when we did the, again, this is famous Acoustics. I actually read the thing. It did identify that we have a surplus of parking. I mean, there's no question. I've said all along, I'd love to personally see us do something with those vendors' parking spots. You know, there's prime real estate sitting there with a big V sitting on it that nothing seems to be happening with. CAO may want to address that one. But, but they just haven't been used. Or we, I know there are service we put and the flexibility is there. But again, you know, I'd love to see us expand upon it. I'd love to encourage all the businesses to go the sidewalk. I think it adds a lot, adds a lot to it. So, definitely go for it.
Good. CAO?
Yeah, on the street vendors. I recall a time when we had McRae Fisherman and all kinds of different things being offered in the street as, and I know there were mixed feelings, actually, on that. There were some who felt that it was competing with taxpaying businesses. And there were some who felt it was a great added to the ambiance of downtown. So, a number of years ago, before my time, council implemented a schedule of fees for those spots. And effectively, the industry was killed. You know, I'm not sure that the fee was the only reason. But we stopped being able to issue street vendor licenses because nobody was interested. There was a process put in place where we would, we would request applications and no applications were forthcoming. So, we have those spots that are painted with Vs that are, that are, really shouldn't ever have been painted. Because the way the bylaw is, is that that's where you can park if nobody's parked there. But it's not yours exclusively. And people read that as a no parking space. And they don't park in those spaces when they're available. So, it's actually effectively cut down on the available street parking to no avail because there are no vendors. So, we could review that, that bylaw if it's your wish, to change the fee, to encourage the activity. If it is desirable to have downtown, if you think that the fee is at the right level, then we could leave it alone. On Water Street, there are, there are blocks identified for street vendors where none of the spaces are specifically identified. But we have had street vendors in them. And they go. And if there's any place on that block, then they, then they can park there.
What's the cost of that?
What's the cost of that?
It's the cost of a vendor setting up.
I've got all kinds of lights here. Go ahead, CAO.
Well, you got me. You got me on that one. Because I don't know off the top of my head. But it, it's in the, it's in the range of hundreds, I believe. And maybe 500 is the number I have in mind. But I can find that for you. Sure.
Counselor, either one of you?
Well, Councilor Mackay, go ahead. I'll defer.
But both lights were on.
Yeah, no, that's right. Okay, thank you. Well, there is, there are, there are different prices. Depends on where you're aware and what kind of business you have. If you have a hot dog vending license, it's probably 35 or 50 bucks. If you have a mobile restaurant, it's $500 for a license. And plus, you have to pay, that's just for the license. That's not, that's not for your, that's not for the place where you're going to go. That's just to get a permit. That's what that's for. And then you have to negotiate what you're going to pay for that space. The parking, parking places on Main Street, I'm with you, they don't have to be painted, really. But they shouldn't be deleted either. They should be where a person would like to put his vending, vending outfit, or whatever it is, to be able to go and make a suggestion and see if that, that place fits it. And usually, it would. I mean, Water Street also. But the reason why I say about this here, and I know if you're comfortable with it with the dollar, you're comfortable with the dollar. If you want to increase tax base, then that means you're still comfortable with the dollar. That's all I meant. There's a chance to increase it by, you know, and I realize, everybody, I pay taxes, you know, in my home. And I pay taxes to be able to walk up Main Street to go to the city drugstore, or the farmer's save, or to the liquor store, or to the grocery store. Because the part of my taxes paid for the sidewalk and streets that I either park in front of or park in a parking lot. All I'm saying is, there's nothing wrong with progress. And there's nothing wrong with charging a fair amount for a, for a leasing agreement. Now, a dollar is quite generous. And I don't know where you would get another, another leasing agreement, other than probably the Killen Brothers building that would be most, most comfortable or genuine with this. I go there because I go there because it's a fact. And this here, the $1, I'm not saying that they should pay $1,000, or $100, or $25. But a dollar, just to make it a legal agreement and take up a parking spot where other peoples come, come to the town and ask, regardless if it's a vendor or not, to get a permit to go sell their wares, has to pay a little bit more than a dollar for an agreement, no matter what you do. But if council is comfortable with not broadening our tax base and only charging that dollar, I'm all for it. I'll go along with it. But this is the chance that we can either charge $25 or $50 rather than that dollar. And if they're going to start springing up everywhere and taking parking spots, which we have a, I've just been informed, we have a surplus of parking. So, maybe we ought to make all Main Street and Water Streets all for whatever we're going to use it for, to charge that dollar and have more businesses come in. But it's not generating any increase in tax base. That was just my, my thought about this whole process. I'm not against the dollar. But it doesn't seem really, really fair to have other peoples be in charge 35 to $500 than to $1. Then that's just my, just my thought.
Counselor Langel?
I must have seen your moment here. I'm totally confused. But that's, that's beside the point. Okay. I think we got two issues happening here. Issue one is the leasing agreement, dealing with existing businesses who want to build a little patio, or an area, or a deck. That is lease, that's agreement. And right now, the, before us is the leasing agreement. So, to get rid of this, CAO, do you need a motion for this thing? Or is it practice in place?
No, I need a motion. Because last year, we did it on a one-year trial basis.
So, I'm going to make a motion that we accept staff recommendation for the leasing agreement for sidewalk cafes within the town of Yarmouth to the amount of $1. And if I have a second, I'll speak to the motion. Seconded. Good. I think this is great. I mean, these people, Phil hit the nail on the head. These people are paying taxes now. If they want to do a little bump, I look at it this way, and I may be wrong, Jeff, and you can correct me. But I think it actually, they save us money. We don't have to worry about paving that little section of sidewalk or whatever, because they've got it all nicely fixed up. And, you know, I looked at them last year. In fact, I enjoyed them last year. And I think many residents did. Nice idea, nice concept. I mean, in Halifax, you go down Argyle Street in Halifax, the whole street is nothing but bump oats. I mean, and they, in some cases, you can keep them year round. So, I, I think this is very positive. And I think we should be supporting this one. The second issue that Councilor Mackay was bringing up was, was the whole concept of vending. And that was a little red herring I threw in there. And just to help some people out with that one, I can remember that one well. Because I was involved with the souvenir business at the time in the town of Yarmouth. And this is where you have a prime example of, of a town not cooperating with existing business. Because the idea was, is we did have vendors who were running around town. We had a ferry. We had people coming in with hot dogs who were selling hot dogs. We had vendors who were selling a variety of wares. And, and it was, to me, kind of a festive attitude or festive spirit. And for some reason, we wanted to dot the i's and cross the t's and create a law, which absolutely evolved into a monster. And I must share this with you in two seconds or less. The business I was involved in spent close to $5,000 on a souvenir cart. Beautiful thing. It's in a barn, still sitting there. Because the intent of the souvenir cart is that you would wheel it down with a student and sell souvenirs by the boat, or somewhere near the boat. And then if you had special events, you'd wheel it to the special events. Well, when we put the vending thing in, you buy a spot. And you're stuck on this spot. You ain't moving from that spot. Like, that is your spot for the year. You can't go from V-spot 1 to V-spot 6. That's how the thing was set up. And man, we put in more regulations and red tape. And people just walked away from it. I mean, and that's, that was the problem with it. It was just another one of those bylaws that we created, or whatever, that became a monster that wasn't intended to be there. I agree with Danny. The, you know, if you have a business in the town of Yarmouth who's selling hot dogs, or is selling, you know, let's say you're selling souvenirs, or you're selling hand crafts, and you're trying to make a living, you're a taxpayer. And all of a sudden, Joe shows up out front with his souvenir cart, selling the same stuff for half the price, I'd be ticked. You know, and I think you need to put that protection in place for your existing merchants and your taxpayers. But on the other hand, if you have unique concepts coming in, let's say, for example, that Acme Lobster Company decides they want to set up selling steamed lobster right on Main Street. And there's really no one along Main Street selling steamed lobster out of the pot. And you want to do it. Okay, if it's not, you know, that's the sort of fine line you play. So, you got to kind of look at it one way or the other. To me, I think the more activity we have in town, the better, the healthier our town is. And if we have to do it by encouragement, great. But we also have got to realize that we have some very frail businesses in our town, that we've got to make sure that we're supporting them at the same time. That we don't, that's that fine line, that they don't have that huge profit margin. So, it's an onus on staff. So, therefore, I'm playing a Danny here with my rant. I'm making a motion.
All right. Didn't we do one?
Now, we did that one. But once this other motion passes, I'm just going to give you notice. I'm doing another motion on the vending. Okay?
Okay.
So, we'll get this one done.
So, right now, there's a motion on the floor that allows staff to go ahead with the $1 for the, okay? Any more discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Carried?
I'd like to make a motion that, that staff review the present vending policy in light of the changing times. And if staff feels they have to bring in the PAC or whatever into it. But I'd like to see us do a little review of that and maybe bring some thoughts and recommendations, best practices from other areas in. We haven't reviewed this for a number of years. I think it's been about, what, 10 years, Jeff? I think in that range. I would suspect, I remember crossing swords on it back around 2000, I think, if I can remember, 1999, 2000. So, it's been a while. Just to go and take a look at it and come back with us, you know, and there's no rush on this, with, with best practices. You know what I mean? Like, what sort of things can we do to be proactive? Because times have changed. And we had a ferry back then. We lost our ferry. We're getting a ferry back, we hope. And that's all I'm asking. It's just a recommendation for staff to review the vending bylaw and to make recommendation to council to possible revisions in keeping with the times.
I'll second that motion. Moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
No. I just don't want to, I just don't want to make it difficult for people. We try to get people to...
No.
It's difficult enough.
It might be making it easier, truth be told.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we put him a signal already that we want everybody to count. And I mean, that message is loud and clear. So, you don't have to review it. He knows.
Got that, CAO? He's all over that. Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay. Casino new ferry.
Yeah, your worship, but, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just reading a kind of, the famous paper, like, beyond Vic, yeah. Casino staff who spent $21 million on a boat, a casino staff will be based out of Portland, Maine. I'd like to make a motion, we contact the Department of Economic Development to see what the actual job, jobs for Yarmouthians or Yarmouth County will be.
Why would we not contact the ship? I'm just asking.
Well, Department of Economic Development's giving out the $21 million. They're, they're the ones that have the, or you can do either one.
I'm just, I'm...
Do both.
Do both. I'd like to know, people are asking me every day, like, if there's any jobs on the boat, what's the story?
Yeah. People are asking, but it, this is going to sound terrible. But, but we don't own the ship. We don't own Walmart. Like, we...
No, but we're putting $500,000 into a terminal. We have skin in the game. And actually, if you count up the money that the three municipal units put in trying to get back the ferry service, plus the $500,000 we put towards the terminal, I bet you, we're close to $1 million. I think the taxpayers, and that's money that we could have put on the Acoustics Plan, or we could have done other things with. We could have, you know, put on recreational facilities. I think we should, as a municipal unit, even though it's not a Yarmouth issue, we keep saying that how we got the boat back is a provincial issue. I just want to know how many jobs are going to be created in, in Yarmouth and Yarmouth area. That's all I'd like to know. And I don't think I'm the only one on the street. I think Councilor Dennis gets the question. Then she posted one of the websites the other day. And somebody went on it. And there wasn't any job posting. They had a, so I'd just like to know. You know, here we are. We got a guarantee, our provincial government has to guarantee $2 million for a regulation on the other side of the water in the United States. Then they sign a contract with a casino company out of Colorado or somewheres. And then they're going to base the staff, after we sign a guarantee, our provincial government signs a $2 million guarantee, so they can get up and sell tickets. They base the staff out of Portland, Maine? It begs the question, like, where's the responsibility to taxpayers? As Vic Aldrich always says, and Martin Pink said, "Nestor Dairs, there's only one taxpayer." Even though you get money from a coin, you get Department of Money of Economic Development. Nestor Dairs always said once, "There's only one pot. There's only one taxpayer." And when you find that chart on the back of your tax bill, to see what money we send to other jurisdictions for policing and corrections and education. We keep very little here. But, you know, we put, we invested a lot of money into that. Province of Nova Scotia invested a lot of money. And I think there's never been a clear understanding, or a clear vision, or a clear, anything on what jobs are going to be here in Yarmouth.
Good. Counselor Langel?
And I think too, further to what Counselor Mooney is saying, we have put a lot, not only money, but investment of time. I couldn't count the hours that I know that Phil and Danny and I spent over the last two years plus.
And Jeff?
And Jeff. Countless, 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 especially Jeff. Countless hours working on this project. It, I mean, and we're not even counting that. And when I get a call this morning, as I did, from a resident saying, "I understand they're hiring staff for the Blue, for the, for the Nova Star." And I said, "Oh, they are? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Who do I see? Who do I know to get a job?" So, of course, while I'm talking to them, as I do here, I'm on the computer, are the jobs open? And, and then I, I said, "Well, no, I don't know." And then this person said, "Oh, yeah, yeah. There's a couple of people in Yarmouth have been hired." And I said, "Well, I do know that Julie Walter from Yazda is the points person. She does the on-point stuff." And I do that Mark Muse has got a position from whatever, whatever he does. And their offices are, "Well, no, no. I hear they're hiring bar staff. I hear they're hiring this staff. I hear they're hiring that staff." And that some people have jobs. And I said, "News to me." So, I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting that we need to be fully versed on everything Nova Star does. But on the other hand, if there are opportunities, especially in light that this council went on record supporting the former crew of the old cat who were displaced. I mean, there was a lot of people, there were 20 odd people who directly lost positions. And one of the people who phoned me this morning was one of those people. And, you know, she wanted just to crack at one of the positions, that's all. Yet, when you go on the Nova Star website, it's still down. And I'm getting my information to Portland. Thank God for Portland newspapers. Because that's where I'm getting all my information on the boat. There's not a lot of interest over here, for whatever reason. And I, that's another part that bothers me. You know, we're slowly, and I got to give Bruce Bishop credit. Bruce is keeping the airwaves going on social media by giving us updates on whatever he knows is going on. Rightfully so. So, I don't know, your worship. I, you know, if you should hear, because you probably do, of any opportunities that are coming up for Yarmouth residents. Because these jobs are going to be jobs for students. These are jobs that'll be for maybe waitstaff, maybe, you know, whatever. And as Phil said, I was kind of concerned this morning, when I, like him, when I read the paper, that the casino operators, they're going to be hiring staff out of Portland. And I thought, "What's this all about?" You know? How much money has the state of Maine put up in this service?
Five million.
How much money have they actually put into it? They put a bond up for 5 million. But they didn't, they haven't put any, signed any checks. I mean, Nova Star isn't ringing around with any checks with the government of, United States government written on it. They got a lot of checks from the Nova Scotia government, which is fine. So, this is some questions I need, think that need to be answered. So, I think your answer, your questions and points are well taken.
Okay. Good. You moved it.
Ken, second it.
Okay, so the, the question, the motion was that we're going to ask, excuse me, Worship.
Go, go ahead.
The motion was that we're going to send a letter off to, who was it? Your...
Economic Development and Nova Star.
To ask them the question, what's, what their hiring practice are between Nova Scotia and Portland, Maine? Is that what it is?
And what are job expectancies there in the town of Yarmouth?
Okay.
Or Yarmouth County, Southwestern Nova Scotia.
Okay, great. That's, okay. That's what I want to know.
Okay. Good. Any more discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor? Contrary? Motion carried. Canomed?
The other one, your worship, is, is, I see my father's former hometown, Stellerton, Nova Scotia, that there's a company going to be setting up in the old Clareton. Jim, you're, you remember the Clareton? You had Clareton? Did you? Clareton plant in Stellerton, Nova Scotia. I think maybe, your worship, and we had a motion here, and we sent correspondence to Canomed, which is, I think, the largest producer of medical marijuana in Canada. And this company that's coming into Stellerton, they're planning, starting off with 30 people and could expand to 300. If we want to be more open and inviting, I'd like to make a motion that the town of Yarmouth, get the mayor, Pam Mood, to contact personally by phone the chairman of the board or president of Canomed, to invite them to Yarmouth to see our lovely town.
Can we have a, do we have something to show them?
Yeah.
Okay.
All wood?
Good. All right.
Oh, I'm seconding it with gusto. I mean, I, we brought, Mayor Mooney, or Mayor Mooney, I'm, I'm, when I read in the paper that Stellerton beat us to the bush on this one, I was wild. I thought, "My God, we dropped the ball on this one." Yeah. Because we brought it up to this council last fall to approach... There are more than one out there. We've got buildings here that would be perfect for this. You know, we've got some structures that are kicking around that we could be very, very useful. Have we had discussions with ERDT to let them know that we have the infrastructure in place? I mean, that cotton mill would be a dream for an operation like that. It would be a dream, because of the way that building is constructed, because of the floors, the amount of weight it could bear, the whole nine yards. It would actually be, that's, and this operation, we all know, grow-ups do not need sunlight.
Almost.
Yeah, grow-ups don't know, I mean...
Well, you're looking at the experts.
Yeah. How do you think the town balances its budget? No, anyway, but, I mean, the reality is, is that we should be really aggressive on this, and we should be looking at other operations, other companies out there. And this comes back to Counselor McIsaac, this professional promoter, we should be looking at ways to look outside the box here. Is there ways to get, because medicinal marijuana in the United States, folks, has gone through the roof. It has become one of the huge growth industries, you know, and we should be looking at that. Not only should be looking at growing the stuff, we should be looking at processing the stuff. We should be going to the next scoop of the envelope, like, processing it, because if you're getting into the processing, folks, then you're into more jobs, and that gives us transportation links with secures, i.e. an airport. So it all fits into a nice puzzle.
Okay. So let's get this motion off, and then I'll come back to that, what you just said. Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay. Questions been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Okay. So I would go a step further and entertain a motion that, I hate to keep asking, your load is getting heavy.
You don't have, I can only, the old staff, I can't...
We don't. I know.
Well, you can contract it, yeah.
No. Make that the motion.
Yeah, I think, I know what you're gonna do.
This is possible, associated.
Yeah, I know. I'm just trying, all I want is a list. If this is one that we missed, because we did send a letter to the other ones, if this one we missed, who else is out there? So I'd like to have that list, together with a list of the buildings that we could use, and make those phone calls, and make that, I mean, we're gonna be proactive?
Talk to, talk to, your worship, I think Sandy had a light on, I think if you talk to Greg, you get the industrial commission, you know what properties that we have, have available to us through the cotton mill, the, oh, yeah, airport. You could even talk to, I'm like, Muse, there's lots of empty, you know, I'd like to see it in the town of Yarmouth, but if that business comes to southwestern Nova Scotia, I'd mean Yarmouth County, I'll be ecstatic if you get 300 jobs in here, anywhere.
Okay. We're good. Counselor Landell, go ahead. I'm all right with that. I can make some calls.
No, I'm, I'm just gonna do, who do I send the invoice to?
Send it to me.
You just did it?
Yeah. Here's a list of the approved marijuana producers Nova Scotia, in Canada.
Send it to me, now...
It's gone. There are, you got, there's, I sent it to Jeff, so, and you. And there are, right now, one, two, three, four, there are nine of them that existed. Canomed is one, Beddo Crand, Nakana, but they're all listed with their idea, their website, and all their contacts. What's that worth, Jeff?
Okay.
So that, the list is there with all their contact info. Everything's there. Yep.
Okay.
And those are approved by Health Canada.
All right. Good.
It's on the website.
M-O-U, read the windmill.
See, I'm not doing Facebook here, you know, when I do this stuff.
Counselor McIsaac?
Thank you, your worship. My question will be for CAO on the, the letter for memorandum for understanding on the windmill and all the other good stuff that we talked about. This is before the past council, your worship, and it's, I think we talked somewhat on this one.
Yeah, I think I signed one. I thought I signed something recently.
Okay, well, yeah, perhaps you're familiar with it. I thought, I thought we had brought it up on a council meeting there, not too long ago, probably the first year we were, everybody was elected. But anyway, I'll wait for the CEO's response.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look that up. I can look it up, though, that's no problem.
Okay, so...
I haven't had a chance.
No, that's perfectly all right. Perhaps, when you have time and you look it up, and you can send us an email, it's...
If you make a motion here, I believe it's more...
Okay, okay. I move that we ask staff to look up the memorandum of understanding that was distributed from the municipality for us to look at and sign.
With regard to...
I think, I'm sure it was regard to wind energy.
Perfect. Good. Okay. Do I have a seconder?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Go ahead.
One more bit of information on this. We're looking at a way to generate revenue, and this here, when you look at the facts and statistics, this is a, will generate money for the taxpayers of Yarmouth. And if we sole partner this by ourselves or with the municipality, then it generates for both municipal units. So it's a way to generate money. It's just like having money in a bank. It does work. Everybody else in the world is doing it, and it's a perfect opportunity for us to try it. Thank you.
Good. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Counselor Landell?
Sergeant, just unrelated, totally out of the question, I apologize for bringing this up. There seems to be a fair amount of discussion on Facebook regarding the town planner. And just to mention, just to draw it to staff's attention, that maybe we should be doing a, maybe we have done a press release already on changes in the town planning staff.
I have no idea what I'm just saying, that there should be a press release, i.e. that's the communication officer again, but there should be, there has been some discussion on that.
Okay. Update Transit RFP. Who was that? Update Transit. Go ahead.
Again, it's been, I took a morning off this morning to relax, and it was a morning from Hades. Now I know why I go to jail. I can't, don't have a phone. Another call this morning, but I think I got my answer, wanna make sure. Call from an individual regarding the transit service. This is an individual interested in getting involved in offering a transit system, not the present person. And I just wanna make sure I'm on the right page here. We've issued an RFP that's gone out, and I believe that's due on May the 15th, or March 15th, I understand, or it's due shortly or sometime. And that RFP is the actual study into transportation, it's the actual transit study. The transit study will be done over a period. Do we have a timeline on that transit? Okay, so it's, assuming it's six months, whatever. So this person wanted to know if, because this person wanted to get actively involved in their proposal, I suggested it may be about 12 months down the road. Am I accurate in that assumption?
Go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, it will take a matter of months to do the actual study, once the contract is awarded, and, you know, depending on what the outcome of that is, the result of that will guide us in terms of procurement of the service that is recommended.
Good. Mayor's Congress, is that you?
Um, I understand that we belong to an organization called the Atlantic Mayor's Congress. Could, I find, again, this was asked to me on the weekend. Now, I vaguely remember some mention of that. What is that? When did we join it, and what's involved with that one?
I can start. So last year, I got emails and phone calls from members of the Atlantic Mayor's Congress who get together as mayors and wardens from the Atlantic provinces, obviously, and I was invited to go. And I don't know what else, I don't know what else to tell you, but they, they basically get together, discuss issues that are common to mayors and wardens in the Atlantic provinces, recommendations to FCM. So they had, they had FCM present at the last one. Minister Rayatt was there after the big, the rail tragedy there, so she was, she was there to update us on that, those types of things. So it's a forum for us all to sit down and get on the same page and see where we wanna go. Counselor McIsaac?
Thank you, your worship. Jeff, I don't recall us being a member of that at any, any time that I sit on council. I'd be curious to know how many other municipal are members of this. There's 52 municipal units, or 51, and I'm wondering how many other mayors are there. And, and I had this conversation at the last UNSM about the mayor's thing there, and there were some people there had mixed feelings about it. It's more, more or less what they called, it was a junket. And I said, well, I don't know nothing about it. I'm not, I'm not in the marital position as of yet. So I said, well, I don't know. So I don't know how many people are members of this. I don't know what it costs. But my other question is, usually, when we join something, and this is one of my questions that I had asked you, and, and a question that I had, a piece of paper that I had passed you for some information on different things, this was one of the questions that I'd asked. When decisions are made of going different places, like for going on trips and belonging to different committees or boards, it has to go, I thought, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, before council, before we join any organization or any committees, or if we go on trips, we have to bring it before council to go on trips, to get permission from council. It's not go as you wanna go, or do as you wanna do. And I don't know how it works for the mayor, and I don't know how it works for councilors. Is it all the same, or is this, there's a different route that we use and that we do? I didn't think we did, but maybe something's changed, I don't know. So if you could, if you had, if you had the time to look at this, it's been probably, probably six weeks or almost two months that I gave you this notice, that I, the information I was seeking. You did, you did send me some, some information on it, or you did talk to me the other day on this. So I'm just curious to see what you had to say more on this.
Go ahead, CAO.
Yeah. The question that you asked was more about the spending authority of chairpersons of various boards and committees. And so I've communicated with the managers and directors associated with those committees, asked them specific questions about spending authority and that. And I haven't had all respond, all respond, and so I haven't responded to you with a, with a complete answer. But this question is much, is much more direct and...
Yes, okay, great.
And focused. And so we don't have a policy, per se, on, on council travel as it relates to authority. We do have budgets, and what has traditionally happened here is that councilors wishing to attend conferences and training and whatnot would bring it to, to the council table. But it has traditionally worked a little differently with the mayor, that the mayor is, has attended different conferences and traveled for different reasons since I've been here, without every, every incident being brought forward to, to the council table for permission. Your, your motion or your direction recently to post travel expenses for all members of council will, you know, obviously make that very transparent. But in the absence of any, of any policy on specific approval for, for travel, I guess we've gone by past practice.
What about joining committees and, or different organizations, like the ones, I think, I don't know if we belong to this, if it's a paid, paid thing that we belong to the mayor's committee, mayor's association, whatever? Do we, is there a fee for this?
I don't know. I don't know if there's a fee. I don't believe there's a fee for being a member of the Atlantic Mayor's Congress. I think by, I don't know if...
I don't know. I'm just asking. So is...
I've received their emails over the years, different emails from that group, because we're a town, I gather, or maybe just because we're a municipality. But I've never received any email that I can recall, what, no, what's, sorry, here. $750 for every municipality. Okay.
For the, for the mayor's thing, so there is a cost. There is a cost to join this organization, and the cost of going to, to the functions that they have. How many members are they on this, does it say?
Doesn't say.
Can we find that information out?
We can find that out.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Counselor Landell?
Um, I may have seen your moment here, but my understanding is that I know in my case, every time I've asked to go somewhere, I've had to come to council to get that permission. That's our practice. So I just don't go anywhere on my own, then come in later. So I'm assuming that practice is always the established practice, that if something is happening, we come in and say, hey, there's a conference coming, X, Y, Z, and I'd like to attend this conference. And I explain to council why I wanna attend the conference, and council can say yes, council can say no, Jeff will choke, and where's the money coming? Danny will ask, where's the money coming from? And Jeff will say somewhere, and anything at all magically happens. But we do have on the record that. And the only reason I, why I raise the Mayor's Congress is there's, whatever this group is called, I don't remember it being brought to this table. And I'm thinking, okay, if we are joining something, shouldn't we have at least on the books that we're joining something? Or, like, how did this happen? You know what I mean? Or can, or can we just join things? I mean, I'd love to join the Canadian Water Association, but that's gonna cost about $1,100 or some fool thing. I think we're members anyway through Dave. But I mean, there are certain organizations that we have, and I hear Jeff on that. So I'm just trying to, I was trying to get my head around this.
CAO?
Your worship, as I mentioned, in terms of the travel, the, we've had, no policy, but we've had practice, and the counselor is correct, that when councilors have traveled, they've been brought, those situations have usually been brought here and decided here. Sometimes it's a decision that anybody can go that wants, and they notify Linda. In the case of the mayors, it has historically, by practice, been a little bit different. And, you know, there's a, there's a budget there, and it's, it's followed. In terms of membership for the Atlantic Mayor's Conference, I would suggest that we, we should have approved that here. We should have approved that at the council table. Yeah. And I apologize for that. It was not within my memory that there was even a membership fee, so that was an oversight.
Good. See, oh, sorry.
Me again. So let me get this, I just, I'm trying to get my head around this. I'm a little slow here at times, and I apologize. So there's a sum of money for the mayor's travel? How much is, because I don't, didn't know about that. How much are we looking at there?
I know.
I'm just curious, what's the, I know we have a, we have a number, I know there's always a number for councilors' travel, but I'm just wondering, well, anyway, could we get that number? And the reason, only reason I'm bringing it up, because I'm, I'm looking at the, I'm looking every year, in our audited statements, we have numbers by our names for honorariums and that sort of thing. And I, and I think, as Jeff said, it's gonna be online, but I'm curious what the, what the numbers are, because it's an expenditure, it's an expenditure, and I'm not saying expenses, Jerry, are not justified, or justified, or whatever. But to me, and again, I'm worse than he is, as a nickel and dimer, that, you know, if we're gonna be traveling, I wanna make sure we're getting bang for the buck. I mean, I'm, I would be royally tacked if somebody's going on a trip for a 15-minute meeting, or if, if, that, something that can be done, which I don't suspect is happening. But I'm saying that I really feel that we, there should be some, some guidelines there and, on travel, and I, I'd like to, so I'm gonna throw a motion out, I'd like to make a recommendation that staff, oops, sorry.
Go ahead, CAO.
I was just gonna respond to the last part of your comment there, is that we do have, or we have drafted a draft travel and expense policy, which the committee has not met and reviewed yet. But it does address, I believe, most of your concern, but if you wanna proceed with a motion, or if you have direction, then we can incorporate that.
But does that affect mayor's travel? Because you said mayor's travel was separate and apart from council, it was a different animal. So just, I just want clarification there.
What I said is that we don't have a policy currently on the approval of travel ahead of time. What we do have is a reimbursement policy, right?
Yeah.
That, so much per kilometer, that sort of thing. But it's, it's like half a page, it's not very detailed.
Yeah.
The policy that, that we're gonna be reviewing is in the area of 20 pages, so it's a lot more detailed, a lot more specific, and it will cover mayor and council, as well as staff.
Because I know some units, which I do like, have a dollar figure per sitting member. They simply say, here's your, here's your budget, you're allowed so much travel. If you decide you wanna go to Whistler, B.C., and blow all your travel... If you decide you want to go to Whistler, B.C., and blow all your travel expense in a UNSM travel, or if you want to go, that's, that's your prerogative, but you've got a dollar value that's there. And that's it.